Counting heads, I see we have nine aldermen here, so we need eight to have the quorum for the meeting, so we can now have 10. So we're, we will call the meeting of the Batavia City Council for Tuesday, January 16th, 2024, and I would ask that you please rise for beef invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight is Batavia and the rest of the Midwest struggles with the enormous snow and cold event that struck us over the weekend. We are ever appreciative and thankful for the outstanding public services that I feel have been given to us by our community, specifically, number one, our Public Works Department, who has been out plowing snow and clearing out areas and taking care of all the necessary situations so that people in the community can move around and go where they have to go. Also, I'd like to pay a special moment of appreciation to the Batavia Police and Fire Departments, who again also rose to the occasion and were out in all kinds of troubled situations. I know the Police Department and the Fire Department yesterday, each of them responded to well over 30 alarms each of things that were happening in our community. So we are ever thankful for that good service. And as always, I want to ask for a special blessing to be showered on those who are from our community and from our nation who are serving in foreign soil in the defense of the liberties of the United States of America. And we just ask a special blessing to be given to each of them. And also, we want to remember all those in our community who are sick or infirmed and need to have us blessing, so we ask for that. And finally, we just ask for division, vision and understanding and appreciation and appreciation for the love of our community that is so evident by the members of the City Council, as it has been always in previous meetings, and we certainly know it will be tonight. So we ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman Wolf, would you lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
For which expands one nation on
For the city clerk to please call the roll.
Barazza.
Here.
Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Peiper.
Here.
Chanset.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Sulfah.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi. Absent.
Malay.
Here.
Ewer. Absent.
Saron.
Here.
Vocal singer. Absent.
So we have 11, I believe.
Yes, sir.
So we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Okay, again, a reminder from the chair that if you're going to address the City Council tonight, we ask that you come up and use the podium and the microphone, because this is all being recorded and will be televised over the next couple of weeks on BATV. And please use that mic, because we've had people not, and then it's very difficult for them to, if they're watching it on TV, to hear what's being said. Have items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda? Do we have anything this evening? Right, moving then to item six, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Chanset, do you have this?
Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place on file the Committee of the Whole minutes for August 8th, September 26th, October 10th, October 24th, and November 7th, 2023; Plan Commission Minutes for November 1st, November 15th, and December 6th, 2023; The building reports for December 2023; Approvals: The January 5th, 2024 payroll in the amount of $1,086,139.97; The accounts payable check written in the amount of $3,959,307.82; City Council Minutes for January 2nd, 2023; Resolution 2024-02R: Accepting a quitclaim deed for lands adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant off Flynn Street; Resolution 2024-05-R: Approving a task order number eight with HR Green Engineering for residential traffic study, speed study, for an amount not to exceed $21,500; Resolution 2024-06-R: Authorizing execution of Task Order 2G for construction engineering service for the carriage crest detention basin construction with V3 for an amount not to exceed $140,556.28; And Resolution 2024-04-R: An agreement with Quad Plus for relay communication testing; And Resolution 2024-01-R: Renewal of the AID Contract Agreement for Victim Services. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Well, Alderman Chanset, second, by Alderman Wolf for approval. The consent agenda is presented. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Uh.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peiper.
Aye.
11 yes, no, no, three absent.
Motion's approved. All right, moving item seven, matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. Do we have anybody this evening? If you come up and use the microphone? Give us your name for the record, please.
My name's Pat McVeigh, and I'm here with my wife, and we live at 641 Maple for the last 12 years in this wonderful town. So my agenda is basically talking about clean energy. But as a concern Batavian, I want to open a public discussion regarding the addition of a carbon capture use and storage unit to the Prairie State Energy Campus that the City of Batavia and 276 other municipal utilities and rural electric cooperatives own. In addition to potential technical problems, this is not a good idea now, because we don't know enough to make a good decision. Currently, the Northern Illinois Municipal Power Agency, otherwise known as NMPA, and eight other public power agencies work behind a confidentiality agreement with the coal plant management to shield financial details, operations, and decision-making processes of the coal plant. In addition, the coal plant has operated over a decade without an approved Clean Air Act permit. And Illinois law requires municipal coal plants, including the Prairie State Plant, to be 100% carbon-free by 2045 with an interim emissions reduction goal of 45% from existing emissions no later than 2038. I believe that these requirements are driving forces that are pushing Prairie State to CCS. But we have a problem. Decisions and efforts to invest in CCUS at Prairie State are being made by only a few people behind closed doors in conjunction with University of Illinois Prairie Research Institute, otherwise PRI, who is leading the CCUS project. Green Biz is a newsletter that goes out, and in a recent article states that Shopify, an investment firm, has invested $55 million in 40 carbon removal startups. Stacy Cox, head of the Sustainability Fund at Shopify, uses a palming three tests to know whether a successful pilot is worth scaling up. One, you must know and understand the financial model that you're using. Is there clarity on potential costs and factors that could affect operational uptime? Two, know the unit economics. Will the facility deliver enough capacity to make an investment worthwhile? Stacy Cox says, make sure that it's something that's going to be bankable, that's going to get capital coming in from other places so that the facility can be built and operated. And three, will it have staying power? Will it make a meaningful impact two decades from now, including factors such as the potential evolution of the technology and how much physical space it requires? Cox also states in a recent article, along with making carbon removable accessible to most types of businesses in 2024, we want to see increased transparency around green claims. In other words, RIP greenwashing. Is the proposed federally funded CCUS project transparent? Well, we don't know yet. In my view, an independent and robust verification must be done to measure the pilot and demonstration units will actually remove sufficient CO2 to justify the unit's economics. Transparency is vital to an honest verification project. Hiding the ball is not an option. In conclusion, if you want to have a CCS unit at Prairie State producing economic clean energy, then before NMPA consents to a CCS/CCUS installation by PRI, it must first come clean with the City of Batavia and other municipal electrics and co-ops regarding the PRI project. The people of Batavia deserve to know if clean energy from coal burning is feasible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? I think we have a situation here where this wasn't on our agenda. So I think we're planning to have another meeting in the very near term, and you certainly will be invited, but that will be specifically published so everybody can come and say what they want to say. But appreciate your comments and your insights, because it educates the council as to the feelings of some of our residents. So thank you for coming down, and I'm sure you'll hopefully come back when we get this before in a committee meeting in the near term. Thank you. Alderman Chanset has a
Just one remark. When residents have come forward and wanted information, the general advice I've given is don't get tripped up on FOIA. Sometimes it's best to ask your question of an alderman or of a staff member, because your answer might not be contained to a document. It might be contained to the knowledge of the professional or one of us because we've read what's going on. So if you have a question about something in transparency, yes, file a FOIA request, but also ask your question, because you might be pleasantly surprised that you might get an answer to your question faster than your FOIA is filed or a better answer, because it's more thoughtful.
I'll keep that in mind.
Please.
If I could ask a question, can you send us the information that you gave us tonight, just so that way we have the listings of what you referenced?
Yes, I can.
Online, send it to all the aldermen and staffs?
Yes.
Thank you.
I will do that. Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. Susan Russo. In December, the Department of Energy awarded three contracts under its, or three grants, excuse me, under its Carbon Capture Demonstration Project. We expect the recipients of the remaining three grants will be announced soon. Because Prairie State Energy Campus could be one of these last three recipients, it is imperative that the Batavia City Council pass a resolution that makes the council's decisions clear to Batavia's representative on the NMPA board. First, that Batavia will vote no when carbon capture contracts come before the NMPA board for approval. And two, that Batavia City Council expects that the NMPA board will obtain an attorney's opinion letter addressing the potential liabilities for the construction and operation of a carbon capture system at Prairie State. Why is a resolution necessary? With regard to the no vote on carbon capture, Batavia's representative has written that he believes he has a clear understanding of city council's expectations. A resolution would eliminate any ambiguity on this issue. With regard to the request for an opinion letter, the NMPA board should require its attorney to do this as part of its due diligence duties to its three member municipalities. If NMPA's general counsel is not a subject matter expert on carbon capture liability issues, as previously stated by Batavia's NMPA representative, then the NMPA board should hire outside counsel who is a subject matter expert to provide the board with such an opinion. Financial and environmental liability and their implications are too extensive and too expensive to leave to chance. We are here tonight to ask city council to put a draft resolution on the agenda of the next Committee of the Whole meeting for a thorough discussion of these issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Laura, I know we've got a pretty big agenda for the next meeting, some issues. I think it would have to be the meeting after that to discuss that.
The next meeting will be discussing video gaming, and then the following meeting we're discussing the bag fee. So maybe the second meeting in February?
I think that would be fine if somebody else wants to join me in that.
Join you. But I think that the direction to staff has been clear, and I think if we're just doing a resolution, because Gary used the word "believe" in a memo, I mean, I
No, I'm not convinced that that's the way to go with carbon capture, so.
So we would just put another carbon capture discussion on the agenda, because I think that the direction to staff is clear, that if carbon capture does come up, that the City of Batavia would be voting no as one of the three members of NMPA.
Right, and I don't know that there's anybody that's here tonight that says yes to it. Is there?
I think an extensive legal opinion letter is premature at this point, because there is no offer being presented to NMPA to participate in carbon capture. But that would certainly be something that our representative could suggest to the NMPA board that they get that opinion letter. When it progresses to the point of there being an actual project, at this point, there is none.
A question. A question about the timeline or the sequence of events, then. You were saying that once we were engaged in a carbon capture project, then we would obtain the letter, or would the letter help inform the NMPA board on whether or not to vote for such a project?
Gary, do you want to answer that? Because I think it's not a NMPA decision at this point. It's a Prairie State decision, but I'll let Gary weigh in.
Thank you. Yeah, at this time, Prairie State continues to have discussions with a potential developer about a potential MOU. There is no project. There is no MOU. There is no definitive agreement. There are no terms and conditions. So it's difficult to have a lawyer chime in on terms and conditions when they don't exist yet.
But would they enter into an MOU without a vote from the owners of Prairie State?
No, that's, I mean, that's what we've said all along, and that's where I will be voting no when NMPA votes whether to approve the MOU or not. And then NMPA as an agency will then vote whether to, whether yes or no amongst the other nine owners, whether an MOU gets approved.
And NMPA would vote without a review from a legal expert?
That's not what I said.
So the legal expert would come in there?
Yeah, yeah. Before, before NMPA even cast its vote, it could ask for a legal opinion.
Maybe that's what we want to discuss from a council perspective, so we have council backing as a resolution to go to NMPA with.
That will be at the meeting that gets scheduled for this, so.
As we discussed previously, we thought it might be ceremonial. A no vote, a resolution coming from us might strengthen the ceremonial no vote. I agree with that.
Good evening. My name is Karen Brooker. I live in Highlands Park neighborhood, near the corner of Fabian Parkway and Route 25. I'm here tonight to speak in supportive statements that were made by Patrick McVeigh and Susan Russo regarding carbon capture at Prairie State Energy Campus. Adopting a resolution confirming Batavia's no vote on carbon capture at Prairie State will provide certainty to Batavia's NMPA representative, to Batavia's fellow NMPA members, and to the Batavia community. Installing a carbon capture system at Prairie State would mean the continued burning of coal at Prairie State far into the future. NMPA has a responsibility to Batavia, Geneva, and Rochelle to determine what liabilities may be associated with the continued burning of coal and with the possible failure of the third parties who would build, own, and operate the carbon capture system to honor their contractual commitments. Adopting a resolution will give NMPA the motivation to fulfill this responsibility. My request is to please put a draft resolution on the agenda so that these issues can be addressed in a responsible manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? The next thing then we have is a presentation by the Batavia Environmental Commission.
All right. Hello, everyone. It's nice to see you all. My name is Alex Celis. I'm the Chair of the Batavia Environmental Commission, and I also have Emma Cole with me and Carol Burnham. And I think the last time we were here was maybe the beginning of 2022, so it's been a little bit. So tonight, we're going to be talking and updating you all about our achievements and initiatives over the past couple of years. I know some of you are new to council, so if you're not familiar with the Batavia Environmental Commission, we are here to fulfill the role of environmental advisor and educator to all of you, to the city government, and also to the community at large. We have seven appointed members on our commission. In addition to the three of us here, we also have Andrew Greenhagen, Michael Willowit, Andrew Deitchman, Gary King. And we've had city liaisons that rotate through every year, including Andrea Padreza, Tim Grimm, and Chris Bong.
I'm going to talk a little bit about what we've been doing. It is a little bit of a broad time range, so we're going to talk a little bit in broad strokes. You saw us all here last year. We worked last winter and spring, working on proposals for the waste hauler contract. During the SEJA legislature going through, we offered feedback during that process about the impacts of what that legislation might mean to the City of Batavia. We have several representatives from the Environmental Commission that sit on the Climate Action Plan Committee, and we're trying to work hard to develop more sustainable initiatives for Batavia. They also worked on the waste hauler contract with us and a little bit with the single-use bag fee as well. Alex sat in on some of the strategic planning sessions for the City of Batavia. And of course, the single-use bag fee ordinance has probably been a big one for the past couple of years. Just a reminder for the people that are new, we started working on that in 2019, getting a lot of information, working with St. Charles Natural Resources Commission, Sierra Club, Kane County Recycling Coordinator, and other community members to try to come up with a plan for the single-use bag fee and whether or not we should do it. And that included a development of a survey that we released all through the Fox Valley and Kane County that we use to guide our decisions for this fee. And thankfully, that was passed, and we started it up. So in the startup, we helped staff develop a draft ordinance for the single-use bag fee. And then when it rolled out, we helped with some of the social media posting. Last summer, we started a share-bag program at the outdoor farmer's market that was pretty successful. Education, of course, that's a big one. We got a little bit offline during the pandemic, so we ramped it up again. But as, as we always do, we've had a webpage for many years. Of course, it transitioned to the city's website this year. We post on Facebook. So, you know, like our Facebook page, we post a lot of stuff up there on recycling, sustainability, volunteer opportunities, and more. This fall, we started a program where we're collaborating with the library on fighting climate change at home. The first one was on November 8th, and it was Beyond the Basics of Waste Reduction and Recycling. And staff actually had BATV record that, so you can find that on the BATV YouTube page if you want to check out that presentation. In the fall, we had a wildflower walk. We'll show you some pictures of that in a moment with the Kane County Forest Preserve. And then, reaching back maybe a little further, we did some Fox River and Dam education, and we did Dam Night Out in collaboration with Depot Museum and with Friends of the Fox River. So here's just a few pictures of some of the events. So it was a beautiful night for our wildflower walk. They got a great sunset. So this was a nice event to do in a new location at the Kane County Forest Preserves. And then this was Kate Garrett telling everybody about the history of Fox River dams out by the dam. And then we went inside Pal Joey's, and we had a presentation, not only talking about the history of the dam, but the impacts of dam removal, and people were able to answer a lot of questions, ask a lot of questions, and get a lot of more information. So I'll take it to Alex now.
She's passing it on because these next two are kind of my babies. So we also, over the course of 2022 and 2023, partnered with the Illinois Small Mouth Alliance to plant water willows. This was on the cobble bar that's just north of Clark Island, south of the Wilson Street Bridge. The Illinois Small Mouth Alliance came to us and wanted to know if we could help them kind of coordinate this planting. They've done other plantings up and down the river and had great success getting those established. Over the course of these last two years, we planted approximately 750 plants that have an estimated value of over $1,500 is the cost of the plant. And 60 volunteer hours were spent installing these plants over two, two days. I think I was here a couple of years ago, and I kind of talked about this project before we actually did it and why we would plant. But just to quickly summarize the purpose of planting these little guys, one, it's a native plant, so it's helping to restore our river ecosystem. Although the name is Willow, it's not actually a woody plant. It's an herbaceous plant that grows to about 12 inches tall. It is really good at establishing because it has roots that spread and hold into the substrate of the stream, so that helps to offer shoreline protection and erosion control. Additionally, provides really good habitat for small fish and the aquatic insects that those fish eat. So people who like to fish would probably enjoy that benefit. And then additionally, these plants are really good at reducing the nutrient load that enters our river system, which helps improve water quality. There we go. So just some photos. The photo on the very left is what they look like when we get them as plugs. And there's a process that the Small Mouth Alliance has figured out, where they just use a dibble bar to kind of make a little hole, drop the plant in, close it back up. And then on the very right, you can see that's the plant in the second year, and it's already grown quite a bit. It's more established, and it's hard to see the flower. I don't know, you can barely see my mouse, but this guy is just a cute little flower. I know I know that I've talked a little bit with Mr. Mayor already and also Tim Grimm on looking to do other planting projects elsewhere in the river that would be a good opportunity. So I think in the coming months, the spring and summer, we'll kind of do some site visits and talk a little bit more about that. The last kind of major program that we have implemented this past year is our Batavia Big Tree Program, which is a partnership with the Tree Commission. If you're familiar at all with the Kane County Big Tree Program or the Illinois Big Tree Program, this is essentially following their framework. And so any big tree that a Batavian submits through our website, we would go out and verify. We would do some measurements, and ultimately, we'll have official big trees for each type of species that's submitted. And that homeowner or property owner would receive a certificate and potentially a plaque that they can post next to their tree saying that they've got a big tree. And if those trees are potentially going to rival any of the county or state trees, then we would submit that on to the county who had submitted through their system and then potentially onto the state. So we've had 14 submissions over our first full year, and we'll be announcing those big trees in April, along with the Arbor Day celebrations.
Okay, I'm here to talk about our 2024 goals and also opportunities to get involved with the BEC. So we, our first goal that we wrote down was that we want to be a part of the Single-Use Bag Fee Fund Uses. We know that there's a meeting in February, and we'll have some representation there to talk about that. Continuing education programs, so we talked about these a little bit already, but Carolyn's done a really good job partnering with the library to have some programs about being more sustainable at home. We have one coming up in February about home decarbonization and one in May about composting. We are also working on programs that bring people out to natural areas around here. We had a wildflower walk that you saw pictures of in the fall, and we are hoping to have another one like that with Kane County Forest Preserve. We used to have a yearly event with Fermilab, and that sort of stopped during COVID, but we're hoping to bring that back this year as well. We know that the strategic plan is calling for a working group for the Greenest Region Compact, and we're very excited about that and want to be a part of that and help that. We also know that you're working on a climate impact strategic tool, and we want to be part of that as well. Our native landscaping initiative, I'm going to look at a couple notes for this one, but we want to promote and educate city and residents on benefits of native plants. We want to have some online education and library programming that relates to that, partner with local organizations, and also review city landscape ordinances to bring in more native landscaping. So those are our major goals for 2024. We have an upcoming vacancy in April, so if anyone out there is interested, you can fill out a vacancy application on the city's website. We also have more information about the BEC on the city's website. We post on Facebook like Carolyn was talking about, and we meet every second Wednesday of the month at 7:00 PM here in City Hall. So come to our events and let us know how we're doing. Thank you.
Certainly, on behalf of the city council, thank you and thank you for your good work. And obviously, we're going to have to have here some discussions with you as some of these projects go forward. And I think the big tree thing could be an interesting conversation because there's a number of people that think they have the biggest tree in their yard, and I don't know who does and who doesn't, but there may be a number of people wanting to come down and get involved in that one. So, and unfortunately, we lost the city arborist Frank Sopp a couple of months ago. He passed away, and he probably had one of the best understandings of where the biggest trees in Batavia were. And unfortunately, he kind of took that with him when he left us. So we probably need to have some other folks delve into that and come up with some ideas as to where the big trees are. But I ran around with Frank enough that I kind of know where he thought some of them were, but there's probably a few more out there that haven't. But most of them are right in the older residential neighborhoods of Batavia, so that would be a good place to start with where the big trees are.
We should send in some nominations.
Pardon?
We should send in some nominations.
Oh, okay. All right. In memory of Frank. Anybody in the council, Alderman Beck?
I just wanted to say thank you and thank you so much for this update and for the very essential role that you play in our community and really appreciate all your volunteer time. And because you said that, Mayor, it reminded me, have we filled the vacancy on the Tree Commission yet? Okay.
I'll say thank you as well. I am excited about hopefully getting back out to fishing again this year, so I'm excited to see how that works for the bass and spawning down there. So I think that'll be really good.
One more. Thank you all so much for the information, for the work that you've done. Talking about volunteering, what age volunteers? Is this something that would be appropriate for students looking for volunteer hours or mainly looking for adults? What's best?
For our meetings, mainly adults, right? But we have events sometimes that we could definitely maybe look for some student volunteers for some of the events that we run.
Great. I would add to that, too, that we've talked about having potentially like a high school liaison come to our meetings and kind of voice their issues and concerns that they would like to pursue in the community related to sustainability and environmentalism. I believe that St. Charles has definitely won maybe a couple.
They have, they have two for each school, I believe.
We did try reaching out. We've tried reaching out to the high school, and I think one of the teachers, it kind of like fizzled or didn't really go anywhere. So that's, it's something that we've been talking about and haven't had a whole lot of traction yet. So if anybody knows someone at the high school, either a student or a teacher, that would be interested in kind of pursuing that and seeing where that goes.
I'll connect with you because we did have the Batavia High School Environmental Eco Club come and speak to us. And so I have contact with their sponsor.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from the council? Well, we thank you for coming down. Appreciate it. Thanks for the annual report.
Yeah.
Okay, moving to item number nine is the Main Street.
My name is Bill McRae. I'm the current president of Batavia Main Street Board of Directors, and we have Beth Walker and Kristin Desler here with us. And today, we're going to do our 2023 annual review. So here's our mission and vision. I can wrap it up by saying our goal is to make downtown Batavia the place to be, the center of the town. And we do that with a group of dedicated volunteers on our board of directors, and most importantly, from the work of our dedicated staff, again, Beth, Kristin, and Kathy, who's not here with us tonight. And I'm going to hand it over to Beth.
So I did hand out the, our annual report. This is just kind of a highlight of some of the things that we're really proud of for this year. It was another great year for Batavia Main Street. I'm not going to go through these one by one. You guys can take a look, and if you have any questions at the end, you can let me know. Here's a couple of the highlights, though. Our amazing volunteers, we had over $1,000 donated, people's time, and we had cool t-shirts this last year. So if, you know, if anybody wants to volunteer and get one, that'd be great. We also redesigned our website, so that was a big initiative that we took on last year. So the website is much more functional and easy to navigate, as well as the backend allows us to have much more ownership of that process. The economic impact in downtown Batavia, we had 12 new businesses open last year, three from the Boardwalk Shops. We retained six businesses. That means either grew or moved locations within the downtown district. That created 11 full-time jobs and filled over 6,000 square foot of space that was empty. And having it over to Krista.
So we're moving into our fifth season of the Boardwalk Shops this year. The application is currently open, so if you know anyone, please send them our way. We've had 35 tenants go through the program, 19 of which are now in permanent locations, and they fill eight storefronts in downtown Batavia. And this year, we're at just over $1.4 million in sales. And also on your infographic there, you'll see some information about our Artisan Collective. That is a program that we do that runs in conjunction with the farmer's market every third Saturday of the month, May through October. It's when we invite artisan vendors to come down to the farmer's market and sell their goods, and it takes our market from about 50 vendors to over 100. This year, we added an additional date, and our participating vendors doubled to 84. So we've had tremendous response from the artisans.
And then I'll kind of go over the budget recap. We had around 40, well, we got $40,000 from the city, another 40 from the special service area. And then from our program events and sponsorships, before expenses, we raised $133,000. And this year, last year, we really invested additional staff time, so it was a 24% increase in our staff, which allowed for increases in the Boardwalk Shop, Artisan Collective, and Farmer's Market. So those programs are just really the things that bring people down week after week, so we're really proud of those and proud of the way that they've grown. And then in 2024, we're actually celebrating our 25th year of being a Main Street, Illinois Main Street community. So you'll see on our social media, we'll have some now and then posts, which will kind of show the changing landscape of Batavia. And then there's our event schedule for this year. And then we are also going to be presenting at the National Main Street Conference in May about running a successful incubator program, so that will be in Birmingham, Alabama. And that pretty much sums up our recap. Does anybody have any questions about our year? Yeah.
I was going to ask, is this presentation available anywhere?
I can send it out.
Perfect.
Yeah. Any other question? Yeah.
Beth, can you just tell the council, maybe you brought it up a couple weeks ago or months ago, but about when you went to, was it the Illinois Main Street or National Main Street? I can't remember.
Well, we went to the Illinois Main Street Conference in November, and we also presented there. It was a very successful presentation, and we got a lot of really great feedback from that. We've had a lot of communities reach out to us because a lot of communities, they're trying to duplicate the Boardwalk Shops, but they don't understand that the Boardwalk Shops, it's not just making 12 shops and just letting people go in and sell their wares. There's a lot of work in the marketing side of it, in the working with the businesses and making sure you're curating that shopping experience. So it is something that is very enviable to other communities, and it's something we're really proud of. But that was a really big win for Batavia in that.
Did you get some awards?
Oh, yes, we did. Sorry. Yeah, we got a promotions award. One of the main things that a lot of Main Street communities struggle with is what do you offer to the people that you serve? And we just made very, very clear guidelines of like, here is how Main Street can support you, and here's how you can be involved in your community. And we shared that with our downtown businesses. It changes a little bit between restaurants and retail merchants, but that consistency has really helped our engagement with the downtown businesses. They know exactly what they need to do to be involved and how we will support them. So that's been really good. So we won, it's called a promotion award for our promotional piece. And then also, we had Susie Ray, who is our vice president, win Outstanding Volunteer of the Year. So we're really proud of both of those things as well.
Any else? Thank you, I guess. Do you have some other things to say or?
No. Thank you for your support. We really appreciate it. We're looking forward to another great season in downtown Batavia.
Great job.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to try and let Bill do this. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving to item number 10, which is Resolution 2024-007, our amendment to the IAFF contract. Wendy?
Good evening. You have before you the new IAFF amended contract. Earlier in 2023, we received a notification that our three battalion chiefs had wished to join the current IAFF contract, and upon approval from the Illinois Labor Relations Board, we entered in collective bargaining. In the memo, it states the terms of the agreement. We only at this time made changes to anything that affected directly to the battalion chiefs, and you can see that information is listed in the memorandum. I don't know if anyone has any questions.
I think we fairly well discussed this at the committee meeting, so I don't, anybody have any comments or motion then to adopt the resolution?
Kirk, call the roll.
Sorry, my computer. I want your names. Can't get them from there?
No. Lehman.
Aye.
Le.
Aye.
Sarone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Cooper.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
12 yes, no, no, two absent.
Thank you, Wendy. All right, item number 11, Ordinance 2024-002, authorizing execution of an option to purchase property at 330 and 338 Webster Street. Laura?
Yes, we spoke about this at the last committee of the whole meeting. Because we are utilizing grant funding that comes from housing and urban developments, there are certain processes that we have to go through before we are able to purchase a property with the grant funding, and this would be for the new location for the food pantry and closed closet and the toy drive. And so rather than being able to purchase it outright at this time, we are only able to execute an option to purchase the property. It is for a six-month period of time for $50,000, and if during that time we decide not to exercise the option, then we would get $25,000 returned to us. If we decide to exercise the option and purchase the property, then that $50,000 would then be applied to the price of the sale as earnest money.
I'd like to begin the conversation here by acknowledging the fact that we're able to do this because of, I guess, no longer our former Congresswoman Underwood appropriated and got approved a $3 million grant from the city of Batavia for this particular purpose. Now, with that grant comes all the restrictions and hiccups, I call them, that Laura's been dealing with, that we have to buy a piece of property that is environmentally secure and sustained and not have any. So we had originally talked about other buildings in downtown that many of you are aware of, and every one of those, when we did the environmental inspection, we had an issue with them. There was something that raised its head, and there was not a solid answer behind it, so the federal folks said, uh-uh. So this is the latest building. This is down there at the corner of Webster and South Prairie Street, right kind of to the southeast of Berkeley's Grocery Store on the other side of Webster Street. And in my lifetime, that building's been there, and I've seen it have several other uses before it got to be this current use. And so I was concerned about if we had some environmental questions that would be raised on that particular piece, but so far, I don't think we've had anything. on that particular piece, but so far, I don't think we've had anything that's insurmountable as far as overcoming it. It would be a very nice piece. I'm very proud of Batavia from the perspective that our food pantry and our clothes closet are exceptionally well-run, number one, but secondly, they're well utilized, and it has a lot of support from the Batavia community comes forth and does it. And because of the size of this building, we're also going to be able to incorporate the Batavia Access Toy Drive, which is the once-a-year toy distribution that we get a lot of public donations to, and it's been run the last few years by the Bailey family mostly, and they do a tremendous job. I think this past year, we had something like 407 children serviced out of that particular program. And what they need is just four walls with a roof that doesn't leak, that they can store all these toys in, that people continuously give them and donate for this particular reason. So we've just got to have some situation where we've got some stuff like that out there. So I appreciate the good efforts, and I would encourage us to go forward and approve this ordinance to authorize the execution of the option.
Somebody wanted to make that a motion?
Second.
Move by Alderman. Sulfah? Second by Alderman. Wolf? Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Bepper?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
12 yes, no, no, two absent.
Well, she's approved. All right, she's already in place, so we'll go to the administrators' report.
Well, I am happy that our two representatives from AID stayed here for this whole meeting, because I would just like to point out that we approved that contract on the consent agenda tonight, and it's a very important relationship that the city has with AID. Back when they began the victim services, we were one of the very first contracts. I want to say that it's maybe going on about 16 years ago or so that we contracted with AID to provide victim services, but it was only until recently that we increased our contracts to 40 hours per week, which is a significant ramp up from what it had been just two contracts ago. But it has worked so phenomenally well, and we so appreciate the services that you provide, not only to victims in the situations in which we are asked to provide service, but even to the members of the department themselves. And you have really integrated yourself with that whole team, and everything works so well. So I appreciate you staying here tonight so that I could say thank you. I also want to reiterate what Mayor said earlier about our departments and what they do when terrible weather happens and the temperatures plummet. The men and women of the Batavia Public Works Fire Department and Police Department are out there in all of it, clearing our streets, making things safe, responding to emergencies during all of that, and they deserve our deepest gratitude for that. I also mentioned a couple of upcoming meetings that we have, some important discussions. On January 23rd will be the discussion of video gaming, and if we want to make any changes to the code that we currently have with regard to video gaming. And then on February 13th, we are going to do a review of how things have gone with our bag fee ordinance, and also talk about potential ways that we might utilize the revenues that we are getting from that program. Also, the Police Department, we have an opportunity to send two members of the Police Department to a great program that is the School of Police Staff in Command at Northwestern University. It's really a prestigious course, follows a, they go for two weeks on and two weeks off format, but over the next several months. And so we expect that, we have two sergeants attending the course, Sergeant Gary LaBarbara and Sergeant Chris Potoff, and we expect that they'll graduate from this course in late April or early May. And then in Public Works, IDOT has informed the city that the Prairie Wilson Construction Project has been officially awarded. The pre-con meeting is scheduled for sometime in the coming weeks, and we will be doing a lot of community outreach to make sure that people understand when things will be happening, the difficulties there will be in getting through that area of our city. But we expect that construction is going to commence late winter or early spring, so it is coming soon, as soon as weather conditions permit. And also, you may recall that last year, the city purchased five bike repair stations at the suggestion of the Batavia Active Transportation Advisory Commission, and we've had all five of them inspected over the last few weeks, and there are some that could use some repairs, so we're investing in purchasing those repair parts for minor maintenance items that are needed. And that's it, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Questions, Laura?
Thank you very much.
Do we have other business from the City Council?
I have two items that I just want to bring up. A couple weeks ago, Kathy Vangelista from United Way was here talking about the Snow Angel Program. I did talk to her a couple days ago, asking her how the program's going. She said it's going great, but they could use a little bit more assistance on the northeast side of Batavia, in the Ward Four area. They have a lot of people that have requested assistance, but a lot of the angels are more on the west side. So if you know of any neighbors on the east side that may be willing to assist neighbors. The second item, a resident did send an email, and it happened to go into our spam email. It was from Kathleen Meeks regarding Batavia being a welcoming city. I know, Mayor, you're probably gonna have a meeting with Mayor Johnson. It was delayed because of the weather today.
I already had my meeting with Mayor Johnson. I was part of the first group that went in and met. It's a very complex situation. When we went to the first meeting, Mayor Johnson basically told us that, there were seven mayors from all around the region, I was one of the central ones, Mayor Johnson basically said that he wanted all the migrants in Chicago, and he needed them because his population had reduced itself over 300,000, and he needs to repopulate the place. And so we all, you know, then he said that, you know, there may be other issues coming up, and that we have gotten them now with the buses being, people dropping them off. Kane County has risen very quickly to that one, and they've taken care of every one of those situations that Kane County Sheriff has, and they have a bus. They go wherever those folks are dropped off, they pick them up, they take them to the nearest metro train station, and some other groups have donated money to buy everybody a train ticket. And then the sheriff puts them all on the train, and they call the Chicago Police at a special number that's been set up, and they tell them what train all these folks are on and what cars are on, and meet them at the train station. That seems to be working. Now, I am told today that maybe Mayor Johnson is trying to find some group to, wants to take some of these folks. That's a very complex situation, because you need buildings, and as he told us when we met with him, he was going to the state legislature and tried to get multimillions of dollars, because he needed to retrofit some old schools and factories that he had. And he had to put in toilet stools, shower heads, and heating and air conditioning into those buildings. You know, I look around Batavia, and I'm aware of about six migrants, immigrants that have come in here from Ukraine, that all are seemingly fit right into the community, and a couple of them are nurses living with senior citizens in town and whatever have you. You gotta be careful with this, though, because, you know, you gotta have someplace for these people to go. And right now in Batavia, we really don't, as near as myself and the staff can figure, we don't have any place that we could move a group of folks into that would meet all the standards. So, I mean, I would just, and I know our neighbors around us are all kind of saying the same thing, that it's not going to be an easy thing to do here, given what the situation is.
And there's definitely that understanding and, you know, that brainstorming you and the staff have done. So I just encourage council to go into your junk mail, take a look at that email. There may be some opportunities through World Relief, which is in Aurora, that may be swirling around as far as maybe getting together some welcoming baskets. There's a list that World Relief has put together of what would be great. I've spoken to somebody in the community that is like a host family, you know, regarding some of the needs of the people that are coming to the area. And I know that World Relief has also negotiated some housing with local Batavia. You know, just really getting out there, the services of how those Batavians that want to help, what they can do to help and contribute, and then also, not necessarily only for migrants coming to the area, but, you know, somewhere on our website, and this was something that Kathleen had recommended, you know, providing services where somebody can turn to, to be like, I know that staff does a great job laying them know, but if there was like a, somewhere on the website, and definitely compiling that information to present to Lori and staff of suggestions of, you know, 2-1-1, food pantry, are there other services in there that somebody could go to and go, am I looking for something particular? And it's listed right there. So that's some of what Kathleen's letter was about, but I do encourage council to...
I mean, it's, I've had several people in town tell me that they had knew somebody in there, and they were gonna bring one or two people out and move them into their house. And I mean, if they want to do that, as long as we're not violating a zoning ordinance in some way, that, you know, we could let that happen. I've done that already. I'm not sure, but, you know, we don't, we haven't got, nobody's complaining or questioning it, but I know there's a lot of people in there that are very nice people, so the City of Chicago staff tells me that just need to, gotta get their feet on the ground and want to find jobs and get your children into school and whatever. So there's a positive thing here, but...
But I do know, I think I heard today that JB Pritzker has earmarked some money for the suburbs, so I don't know if maybe that's something that we want to jump on to maybe consider. I know that we missed the first round, but, you know, see what's involved with that and what, you know, if there's a possibility for Batavia funds.
Yeah, the thing that I think is the biggest barrier to us doing something like that is the lack of housing. You know, that's really like probably their most immediate basic need is for housing. The other thing is much of these folks, their destination is Chicago, because they've got a hub of services there that, these are asylum seekers. So without filing appropriate paperwork within a certain period of time, they will not have the right to remain in the United States, and they've got all of those service providers. I actually heard a presentation from World Relief this morning at my Rotary Club, and there are several organizations that are like World Relief, and the City of Chicago is coordinating, saying this 800 group of folks, World Relief is going to bring them through all of the processes that they need. I feel the way that Batavians can help the most is probably through these organizations that already have an understanding of how to help the immigrant and migrant communities. And when they do end up, you know, after having gone through the process of filing their papers for asylum, and they find a place maybe to live with a host family here in Batavia, certainly, we've got all kind, like you say, the food pantry and clothes closet, we've got chip in, but like World Relief will help that family get their children enrolled in the local public schools, for instance. So I think the best, in their situation now, rather than, because I can't imagine a program, those would be a completely new set of services that the city has not heretofore provided.
You kind of hit it on the head. Right now, the number of vacant homes in Batavia is almost nonexistent. I mean, there's somebody wanting to buy it or rent it or move on into it, and there's not very much. I've looked recently at the real estate listings, and there really aren't many, because everything's already occupied or taken, or there's contracts on the property. And so in some of the older neighborhoods, I'm amazed at the values of the houses that they've climbed to. I've seen, I'm seeing some really new numbers of somebody who's been involved in the industry in the last year or two, that some of the older neighborhoods of Batavia have really taken out some significant value, because people want to get here, because they perceive it to be a nice town, a nice, safe place, and, you know, we're between two railroad stations, we're going to Chicago, we got 88 right to the south of us. You know, we've built 349 houses last year, whatever the number was, and every one of them's occupied. I mean, you know, it's not like out there at Winding Creek on McKee Street, the developers are telling me they got contracts signed, but they haven't started building the houses yet, because they got too much business. So, I mean, it's a good problem to have, but on the same token, it really kind of cut short some of the ideas that you're talking about as far as trying to help some of these people. You've got to find some people in town that are willing to kind of adopt them and bring them into their home or something, because those types of situations that sometimes pay some nice dividends for somebody that does that in the days ahead, you know, years ahead, when they brought some kids in that come back as adults and take care of them in their old age and stuff like that. So there is, there is some turnaround on all that. So thank you for bringing that up, because I think it is an ongoing situation here.
Anybody else?
Yeah, just real briefly, and I mentioned it to Alderman and Beck on the side, but it just struck me that, and maybe we talk about it at some point in the future, about finding some more funds for the Batavia Main Street, that we give them $40,000, and to mind, I mean, from what I see, a lot of what Batavia Main Street is doing is the lifeblood and the vibrant, you know, vibrancy of the community right now. So, I mean, anything we can do to support that and grow it and take that to the next level, I think is, you know, would be a good, at the very least.
I would support.
Well, it's something that we should talk about at a future committee meeting. I mean, obviously, we can't talk about it tonight here. It's not on the agenda or anything else, but I mean, it's something to talk about.
It just struck me that, you know, they're able to do all that they do with the little that they have, so kudos to them, and I want to support that, because all those things they list are the things my family loves, you know, so it's like, let's grow it, so.
Anybody else have any other things?
Under the mayor's report, I'm gonna be very, very brief, because I'm sitting here a few minutes ago, and all of a sudden, I see the fire chief jump up and run out the door. Well, what happened, I guess, is we have a, I guess, a bad accident out at Kirk Road and Wilson Street, a car versus an 18-wheeled truck. And it doesn't say anybody's been killed. I think there has been some injuries, but they've got the intersection shut down, is what I'm reading here. So if you go out to Kirk Road, I wouldn't go that way. I'd go down to Prairie to Pine or something, because the intersection, I think it's still closed out there from what I gather. I have other than wish, continue to wish everybody a Happy New Year, and somebody want to care to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second. Motion, Baldeman. Second, Baldeman, Sulfah. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.